Meeting for orders. Now, please, please hold the board.
Trustee Bell.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee William.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I just wanted to say, I have something to say. Um, and I know it's probably an elephant in the room, but I did send out termination letters. Notice, because I knew that this village wanted to go in a different direction with our legal service. I would like to work with the board, but to do so, I need a law firm that I have confidence in, who will impartially advise this entire board. I do not want to keep working under the previous broken system. If the board wants to overturn the removal and then replace them with a new firm as a regular meeting, that's fine. I'm not here to argue, I'm not here to go back and forth. I'm just here to state the facts. Hopefully, we can work something out. Hopefully, that we can come together, because this is what it's all about. I'm hoping that people are not just here just for the money. Hopefully, people are not here just for their own education. I know when I got elected, I said I would work for the people. And I believe that these trustees got elected for the same reason, not for a difference of judgment. That being said, second item is a motion to restore the law firm of Olson's Circuit as the village attorney is affected.
So, second.
It was moved by trustee William, taken by trustee Brewer. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask, when you first terminated Olson's Circuit on Friday, you terminated it by a letter, but you did not inform the board nobody. Olson's Circuit had to report this of it. Your failure to inform the village board is kind of like, where's the transparency? You also failed to cite a proper municipal court session. And we don't know who's been advising you, but when you fired the firm, you were supposed to give reasons at that time, not just stating publicly. So, you were supposed to give reasons for your body to take action. And you have to give the village attorneys a chance to respond to certain state statute. So, Mr. Mayor, at this time, please, advise the board what you just did in short form. Why you wanted to terminate Olson's Circuit as a village attorney? And I ask that they have a chance, as the law states, to respond at this time.
That the law has a chance to respond.
That the law firm has a chance to respond, first of all.
I know you just didn't say about transparency.
Oh, I did.
I just went to note. And you, first thing you came in on May 21st, if you remember this, there were thirteen different motions and four different order systems, one resolution that I had nothing, knew nothing about. I asked the board at that time, at that meeting, if they know anything about it. And the board said, no. No, I'm sorry, the board didn't say no, the board didn't say anything. I asked the attorney, after about six times I asked the board, did it know anything about it? And they said, well, we got to leave. And then these two places, the first and the second event.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, yes, the first and the second, the motion and the second.
She asked a question. You don't want me to answer her question? Or we want to just move on and just do what like me, like me presented now? Trustee asked a question. I'm sure she, she had it for a reason. She hasn't touched my, oh, okay. So now, you don't want me to touch my?
No, don't continue.
Do you want me to?
No, actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what I said was, you probably answered my question when you opened up the meeting. What I wanted to now is to give the attorneys a chance to respond.
Okay, and you didn't know, you asked me, you asked me, why did I get rid of the attorney?
You just said that when you.
No, I didn't finish, why I got rid of the attorney? No, no ma'am. I didn't say that.
I was, I was just, you said, why the attorney?
I didn't know, I didn't say why I got rid of the attorney. And you said I did inform the board. No, I did not inform the board at the time that I fired the attorney. No ma'am, no, I did not. But now, you can ask questions, but you don't want to hear the answer.
Yes, sir.
No, I did not, because I never told you why. I told you what transpired that made me come to that conclusion. I did not, you did not tell me or ask me why I did. I will continue to what I just stated.
There was a motion on the floor.
We still need the attorney to respond.
Okay, so you want, you want to do the motion, or you want to?
I want you to do the twenty second, sir.
So, you don't, you don't want, you don't want me to answer?
You weren't being transparent with the board.
No, you, you guys were not being transparent with me. You were not being transparent with me when you did what you did on May 21st. You were not being transparent, but now, you don't want to hear my side, so you just want to go ahead. So, this is what I'm talking about. This is exactly what I'm talking about. We give the trust, I mean, the lawyers a chance, but you don't want to give me a chance to stick around, sir. So, that's, so that's fine. That's fine with the board, that's fine with everybody out here.
His answer was.
Let them be like.
His answer was, "I'm sorry, I told the board to talk to you." I said, "Really?" But they did. And all he could say, "I said because if you put yourself in our one example, even though he may not," or whatever it takes. I'm not here for popularity, kind of talking to move this village forward, to make this village a better place for everyone, everyone to live in, not just a few. And applying rules and regulations to every person, every resident here. Not that was back going down like this news on the side. We don't see this one, we see that one. I'm here to make sure that the laws that we have apply to everybody, not just a few. That's my job. And the job for the trustees is to make sure they watch the money and legislation. I'm here to enact legislation. But when things happen, yes, I am upset because I've believed in this law firm for seven years. I believe in them and I have no power. But to allow that to happen because whoever, yes, that's hurting, that's very hurting. And no, I don't like it. So now, you say you want the law firm to have something to say? By all means.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, our county of Eric State, who so has not just stated, I'm working on how long I agree. Mayor, my office was surprised to receive the letter last Friday. Bert Olson called the village and left a message for you.
It's good news for Grant. Could you just pick up this little tracker right here?
Bert Olson called the village and left a message for you, but received no response from you. Bert also left, "It would still on your cell with no response." Later in the day on Friday, he sent an email, still no response from you. We sent the letter to the entire board to advise the board your action. Not knowing any specific reasons for your letter, I thought it would be good to give a little background on Olson and Sturrock's history with the village of Sock Village. As you know, my office was brought in by former Mayor Towers as his third of village law firm. From that day forward, our office has been involved with significant projects, litigation, and economic development of the village. For example, we were deeply involved in water litigation with Illinois Attorney General and the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. And settled that matter for a few thousand dollars and not the tens of thousands of dollars in fines the state initially demanded. During that crisis, we negotiated with contractors and vendors, village engineers and department heads. We worked on village financing for the installation of temporary and permanent airstripers. We also worked with our contacts with the state, and the low interest loan for those airstripers in the water crisis was subsequently discharged as a debt to the village. We have coordinated many meetings with state officials regarding tax incentives and development for the logistics center. We have worked with all the village fifth districts and worked on a number of bond issues for the village. Through the years, we have given solid legal advice as to personal matters, along with negotiating the village's collective bargaining agreements and handling all labor issues. Lastly, we have handled the majority of the village's litigation, which from time to time required your participation either at deposition or in court. Many times, you have complemented our lead of litigation abilities and the results in the board we had. Recently, I advised you and the board of the status of pending litigation. When you took office as mayor, there were 12 pending lawsuits against the village. As I reported, my office resolved 11 of those cases. These cases include a litigation pertaining to the village's water supply contamination, which we settled for less than $50,000 between four separate cases. The Henrietta Turner case, where the trial court awarded the images and attorney fees for approximately $100,000. Our office warned on appeal, there were no attorney fees allowed to Mr. Turner or the law firm's representative. Police had given lawsuits, who demanded hundreds of thousands of dollars and settled for $25,000 at the eve of trial. And a number of civil rights cases such as the Moore versus Sock Village case, where the plaintiff demanded $325,000. The Michael versus Sock Village case, where the plaintiff demanded $625,000. In the James versus Sock Village case, where the plaintiff demanded over $200,000. All three of those cases were defended by our office, and we resolved several. All three of those cases were approximately $200,000 covering all three. We have led the defense of the sales during matter, and the court granted our motion for some rejudgment recently on behalf of the defendants Hanks and Ferbitt. The village remains a defendant and is represented by another law firm, but I advise you and the board on the strength of the best of that case. We have kept our fees the same hourly rate as when we were first appointed as village attorney, at $165 per hour. We have always been mindful of the village's legal bills. And as you know, when the village faced financial difficulties through the years, we allowed our legal fees to go unpaid, sometimes for up to six months, and helped out the village in extremely difficult times so the village could pay other bills. As I stated, we have worked through three different administrations as village attorneys and hope to continue to work with your administration. When you were elected mayor, you advised our office not to attend village board meetings in an effort to cut legal fees. We agreed, and we have had very little involvement with the village over the last two years. During this time, however, you have hired all the law firms to do village work at higher hourly rates. My office issued a FOIA to the village requesting some legal bills, and our FOIA request was not fully answered. I have been informed that the Labs Law Firm is billing the village at a higher rate, $175 per hour. We won't know how much he has billed the village until our FOIA is answered. Your administration recently retained Barnes &amp; Thornburg, a large international law firm having over 1,000 attorneys to handle a routine FOIA matter. That firm has offered the village a discounted hourly rate of $495 per hour for their associate attorney and $600 per hour for a partner on a FOIA matter. While not having the village attorney at board meetings or involved with village operations may be sound financial, maybe a sound financial reason, the result of not having the village attorney involved with ongoing management relates to many things not being done directly. Just a cursory review of the last two years of agendas, minutes, and coordinances indicate many are improper and if not illegal, it will have to be redone. I had to issue an amended village audit letter for the last two years because there is pending litigation that my office was never made aware of. The village's audit is used to establish the village's bond rating in finances. This oversight could have had a significant impact on the village's finances, including the two current bond issues that are currently being worked on. As far as appointments, there have been a number of improper appointments and removals from village personnel. As far as termination, the former finance director's termination did not comply with state statute. A lack of transparency, FOIAs are not being answered. There's delays in answering or improper responses have been issued. Just a few months ago, the village had settled a FOIA lawsuit and was required to pay the requesters of terming fees, costing the village over $3,000. The current FOIA litigation, again being defended by Barnes &amp; Thornburg, has cost the village $3,000. That is on tonight's warrant, and the complaint hasn't even been answered yet by that law firm. It appears that the village zoning vote has not been followed over the last two years. Mayor, as you know, elections have consequences. As I stated the other night, I feel like this is a scene from the movie Groundhog Day. What is happening now is what happened years ago when you were a trustee on the board under Mayor Towers. Back then, you were part of the majority of the board that gave direction to my office to grant coordinances. Certainly, you remember the ordinance we created to abolish the village administrator position. Certainly, you remember the ordinance we created to abolish the chief of police position. And the ordinance which installed certain powers over the police department to the fire chief. Certainly, you remember my office appearing in court on multiple matters in opposition to Mayor Towers. This all occurred while you were a member of the majority of the board of trustees. Mayor, we have always strived to advise the elected officials of what they can and cannot do. It is then up to the mayor and the board to either implement those actions or not implement those actions. We are hoping that will be restored as the village attorney for the village of Sock Village and look forward to working with all the elected officials to do the good work that the residents expect and deserve.
Hey, I appreciate that. Letter that you wrote. And basically, you did your job. That you got paid for. And that's not a problem. The problem, as I stated, was the untransparent way that you handled this last matter. That's why you can hear about it, just because you did your job. But for this to happen, I cannot go any further and believe not the board would like to replace and put you as legislative council. I will tell them that. But I cannot sit and ask questions of someone, a person, that actually did what they did as I just got to explain and put that person as my corporate counsel. I'm sorry. I appreciate, yes, I remember a lot of these different matters. Some of it getting accurate, and you said, "I'm not going over that. I'm going over, I'm just looking at the whole picture." The whole picture is, you did not inform me of what was going on. I'm not talking about the board. So if that's what, if that's, if there's a problem, I would say, if you don't see a problem with that, then yes, there is a problem. If you don't see a problem with that. But the board would like to retain you, as they have the right to, as legislative council. For the legislators' duties and actions, I have no problem with that. But as far as corporate counsel? I, I go, any other questions, it's not I'll ask.
Can you recite the motion, please, Mr. Mayor?
The motion was to retain old Mr. Williams. Restore Olson and Sturrock as village attorney, if they could be needed.
Thank you.
It was moved in second. I didn't ask for it all the way.
Justice Bell?
Yes.
Justice Brewer?
Yes.
Justice Grant?
No.
Justice Nix?
Yes.
Justice Todd?
Yes.
Justice Wade?
Yes.
Motion spirit. Public time.
I remember when Towers was the mayor. I would tell y'all this. When the person is not trustworthy, I don't care what color they is, they're not trustworthy. Now, the people went against Towers, all the trustees, and he got his silver letter, telling Towers about people want to represent the trustees, and the trustees were going to bag him up. And your trustees bagged him up here. Let me say this to you, if either one of you all get to be mad, you think you gonna make the trust fee? I don't think so.
Judy Kents. It's amazing to hear all the things that you had to say, Mr. Burgess. We get up here week after week after week and complain that there is no transparency with you, that there is favoritism playing with your administration. We see people who are forced to pay things and other people are not. That's not transparent. We see code enforcement being overlooked for some people, but not others. We've sent FOIA after FOIA after FOIA, begging for some transparency, and you won't give it to us. You hire people and when we ask about where are they from, what's their background? We get a letter saying no paperwork exists for them. Well, how'd you hire them? You won't tell us anything. You're not transparent. You can't have your roof fixed today without going through hell. You could put stuff up in your yard that looks like garbage and it's overlooked, but let somebody not cut their grass and they're getting tickets. And it's been reported and reported and reported. Certain people seem to have liking and others don't, if they don't agree with you. And we've asked for that transparency, and it's not right. Maybe they didn't tell you about what they were going to do. But did you ever tell, why does a trustee have to FOIA? Because you won't tell them what they're supposed to know. Now, you're demanding that you told what you think you need to know, but you won't give the same courtesy to the others. I think that's called being a hypocrite.
Uh, what I would like to clear up here.
I'm sorry. And thank you, Dad.
Frank Williams, 1633 2C. What did you say?
Bless you, Dad.
That's Frank Williams.
It's against the law for us to ask for your address anymore, so please just don't get a press conference.
Now, what I would like to be clarified here, I don't know about no other village but Sock Village. The mayor is not high up by anybody. You must understand that, people. I don't care how you look at it, he cannot do it. Only thing he can do are pull it. He can make recommendations, but he cannot hide it. The trustees do the hiding, do the hiding and the finding. That's who do that. Nobody else can do it. He can recommend anything he wants to recommend, but it has to break into the board and it has to be with the consent of the board. At least two thirds of that board has to agree with him. Other than that, he cannot do it. Now, he knows that he's been a trustee for eight or nine years. He's no good one enough that that's what he's gonna do. I'm not talking about the whole village, I'm talking about Sock Village. And I can prove to you anytime you can, to show you, the mayor is there, the board, if three and three, he breaks the tab. That is his job, and that's all he can do. Now, that's the truth.
Pat Couch. All those FOIAs that we put in and got back those answers that said, "No documents exist. No documents exist." If you had had whoever do their job and complete those FOIAs, there would have been a lawsuit. And how many times, up here at this podium, for two years, I have asked questions of you and never get an answer? If I get an answer, it might be two words, but you have refused to answer me anytime I get up here and ask you a question. How transparent is that? I put in a FOIA several months ago. I got back a part answer, it wasn't what I was going to say, but I got back a part answer. And I paid $120 for that FOIA. And I only got back part answer. A stack of papers that high were redacted. It weren't anything, they really, it was a joke. But I would be putting in for my refund because that was unethical, the way it was answered, because it was late every single time. I would get back a note. "No documents exist, haven't got time to do it, it's gonna take a little while." I paid for that redact, for that paper that was redacted. But if you had had it answered properly, we wouldn't be going through some of the stuff we're hearing. If you'd been transparent and answered the people's questions when they get up here, we wouldn't be going through some of this. Thank you. Hope Mr. Olson and Sturrock are taking notes.
My name is Ted Maris, and I got involved about two years ago, Mr. Burgess. When I came in your office and I just asked you to come to the building. I know there's two opposing sides here, there's gotta be a happy medium. And I had faith in you. And I got criticized by the other side, by your side. And I said, "You don't know what it's like to be mayor." Give you 48 hours to give me an option of how we can come together. Failed to do that. You didn't respond to me, you didn't return my calls. Joe Weaselwattie doesn't return my calls. Oh, whatever. Okay, my point is, I would not be standing in front of you if we can just come.
Excuse me. He's on the trial.
My point is, since I started working in Sock Village, I have taken 47 houses. I have taken them from vacant and abandoned, broken windows, broken in, drug, drug houses. And I have now all 47 houses occupied with good, outstanding tenants. Guess what? I need an inspection on those houses. You know what Tri-County Housing said to me? The words come out of your mouth? You make sure you fail these guys. He came to my house and he said, "This is the best house I've seen in all of Sock Village, but unfortunately, I have to fail you." You know why he failed me? Because I had paint chipping on the outside of the house. And he was told by Mr. Joe, "Make sure there's no paint chipping, make sure it looks cute, it looks pretty." And when he inspected my plumbing, he did this. "Yeah, we got hot water? Yeah, we got cold water? That's good. That's not inspections. We need to go back to the way things work." And for you to tell your buddies that you got in here to do the inspections is quite frankly bullshit.
The story would be different.
My name is Larry Seck. And it's sad to see how violent this system is here and our expense. And I heard the lawyer talk about the litigation that you handled. This sounds like he did do a good job, but I didn't hear anything about the cost of these mythical investigations that's ongoing. And what level would that affect the good residents of the village? Regarding some complaints that I've heard, I did my own research and I find that those complaints are true, with the exception that they were going on before you were even mayor. Nobody had a problem with that. Nobody. And this is not about me being racist, but I see you in the room and you can deny it all you want. We need to work on behalf of the residents of the village and put your personal feelings aside. You didn't come here to get even with the mayor, but it seems like that's what everybody's trying to do. He wants to turn the clock back to his advantage? I don't know if the things he's saying that somebody says is true, that's hearsay. So we can accept that and should be stripped in front of the record. Stop working on behalf of the people. Because it's our money you're wasting.
My name is Stan Zeigl. I requested FOIAs in the past from the village. The results have not been satisfactory. I sued the village. The case was settled. I have outpiled today, wasn't yesterday, requests, two more FOIA requests. I hope they will be properly answered. No excuses. No, no make, uh, reasons for trying to delay. Because I don't want to be in the position we were before on the pursuit. I requested some very simple things. I can't believe that they would be secret. You know, the copy of the ledger for the waterfront. Now, come on. There's no reason to try to, you know, find, find a reason to deny that. I requested a copy of the detailed ledger for the waterfront for the past, past two fiscal years. There's no, no reason to try to find somebody to find a reason to withhold that. And I certainly hope that, uh, that you won't. If it, if you would feel better, uh, you know, with the advice from an attorney you trust in order to release that information, you know, so be it. But it is important that, I'm the executive director of the Citizen Participation Institute. We are the ones who, uh, keep communities up to date on the ever-changing FOIA law. We, uh, we published the only book available that they have to see what the Attorney General's opinions are in latest editions. You know, we routinely handle FOIAs, and I hope that the village of Sock Village will, uh, deal with the FOIAs that I plan to issue appropriately.
Okay, um, appreciate the comments. That's your opinion. I only have one thing to say, well, two things to say. And it's very, it's, I, I really don't know how to say it, but just, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it. If a person came in here today and I said this, and he sat before, I was sitting in that seat down there, and wanted to do business in this village, it would run, not walk, would run out here and go to the next place going. Until we, not just me, just this board, until we come together for the common good, and I thought, I thought the common good was the benefit of the village. But until we come together on the common good, we will not go to here. I'm surprised that we were able to get the gas and water that we got. We got other things that's coming up, that are, that are coming out. I hope that someone that's bringing those things is not sitting in this audience tonight. Because if they can't get past this back and forth, why should they do business here in this village? And they can go down the street and have less, 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 whatever, death compensation. It's a shame that I can sit out here and these board representatives sit out here and look at the divide. You can see the divide. As a matter of fact, it's oxen. You can see the divide. It's almost like you see on television when you see the Democrats and Republicans clapping each other with one stand, one step, just to whatever happened. That's not how you bring a village together. Yes, I know you've been here for years, yes, you have. A lot of people have been here longer than I have. But you're here. You're here and you hope that, that, that justice is for everyone, not just for just you or the ones that end up. So that being said, and, uh, yes, he left, Mr. Mayor.
I don't like them.
Mr. Mayor, I know you don't.
I don't like them.
But I just want to say that, and I'm, 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 I'm gonna be a gentleman as I repeat, but this man came off, sat down and told me, but that's everything me and him. But it's a shame that the man up here now, to say that all the work was being this, this, and this. If you are having the poor conditions for people to move in, and we find that, you can use any excuse you want to, why should a person pay rent and live like that with mold, mildew, not running water, paint, whatever it may be? You don't have to have your house. So why is it okay for that person to do that?
Not in our houses. Your houses.
First of all, sir, first of all, I'm not going to, I don't, I don't have, flirting out is worth it to do with this. I give everybody a chance.
It's okay, you can, you can, you can pay it, you can say that he has to hold the houses.
I gave you a chance to come to the podium, sir. All you have to do is come up there and express your feelings.
Would you like me to do that?
But, but, not now. But you have, but now you're being disrespectful.
Oh, I'm not disrespectful.
Yes, you are, sir, but I give you a chance.
I'm saying that this, I'm saying, giving the residents, holding the investment.
You'll get another chance, no more other days.
I'll add one motion to adjourn. Moving by trustee Williams, second by trustee Brewer, all in favor?